Okay. Let's get this meeting on the road here. I know we have a special person in the audience, so I know she's got other things going on today. But nevertheless, welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting on this May 2nd. And as we, to what you do, we'll begin the meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And the invocation is seen will be done by Carolyn Presschun, who is one of the organizers of the National Day of Prayer. And the pledge of allegiance will be done by the Honorable Norma Torres, member of the United States House of Representatives, representing obviously the city of Montclair, so please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come before you knowing that you really are everywhere, but we're invoking your name and your presence in this chamber. Dear Lord, I pray for each one of the members of the council and the mayor that they would have your wisdom and your kindness and your thoughts being given to the people of the community of Montclair. Thank you that you have placed these people in their respective districts and that they should all do for the good of the people. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody, please join me, your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I want to say this Congressman Torres, we're in a war. We all know that, for lack or not. And that I think this country of ours supports the people of Ukraine. And the people of Ukraine are in our prayers. And at the end of the day, people of Ukraine will prevail because of the leadership of this country, the terminations country, and people like you Congressman Torres to make sure they get the resources, the assets, not just for war purposes, but also for humanitarian purposes. Thank you for being here. So with that, I'm going to do the presentations tonight, and I'm going to ask my colleagues to come forward for the first presentation.
Mayor, would you like me to take roll call?
Everybody's here, right?
Yes.
We're all here. There's no reason for roll call. Okay, well, we'll try this again with his mic. But Congressman Torres, I attended an event you had about a month ago in Pomona at a very important place for you in Cadishia Hills. And part of the federal discretionary funding that you were able to get for your district included that park. And the other portion of that is $2 million for the city of Montclair. And on behalf of the council ourselves and, you know, Desiree, come up here, Desiree. Come on, you're coming up here because you're part of this too. And it's more than just a park. It's a baseball facility for our youth. And this is very, very special that you're able to make sure Montclair gets its $2 million. And obviously, we're going to do the park. But nevertheless, I don't know if you want to give this to me again? We can turn around, do pictures again, and then you can get a chance to say something. So maybe we'll go on this side, or you want to go ahead and present to me first?
Yes, I just want to take this moment, Mayor, to thank you and the city council for your unwavering support for our community, our youth, the future leaders of this great city. In recognition as a recipient of the community funding projects for fiscal year 2022 and with the award of $2 million, which target federal funds towards projects and programs in the congressional district that will address the most significant needs facing the communities. Thank you for sharing this honorable opportunity with our office.
Great, thank you. Come on up, Carolyn. And of course, now we are a great nation of our culture and everything else. We're also a great nation because of our belief in God. And I know Carolyn, that you have played a big role in making sure that National Day of Prayer is very relevant in our region. And I know you're going to have, this coming Thursday is the National Day event will be held at the Ontario Convention Center, if I'm correct? Double tree, excuse me, the double tree, and I apologize, I will not be able to be here for that. But I do want to declare May 5th, 2022 as National Day of Prayer here in the city of Montclair. And I'd like to present you the proclamation.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the people here in Montclair, not because they're just next door neighbors to where I live, but also to know that once we started using the proclamations, we actually put them up on display at the event. And we encourage the people that are there to really look and see that their government officials are really concerned and would like to have prayer. We'd like to have you come. We know it's a hard job that you do. And we actually, if you've not been to our event, we actually pray there. We just don't talk about prayer. But our speaker this time is the first woman four-star general, Mary Ann Miller. And so she's going to be speaking. But we're also going to have some music, but we're also going to pray for the people in the room. And many of you have already probably received some of our postcards from the past. So we just don't do just the 500 people in the room, but another 2,000 people after that. So thank you for your service, and I hope you can come with us.
Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is public comment. This is our opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that's on the agenda, or if there is a consent calendar you wish to address. You have five minutes. If you're on Zoom, you activate the raise hand feature to request to speak. And if you're on the phone, you hit star nine. So at this time, I asked the city clerk, and if you're in the audience, feel free to raise your hand or submit a blue, if you haven't done the speaker's card. So I'll ask the city clerk if she has any speakers.
I don't have any cards. I do see Bruce Culp is raising his hand.
Tiffany, you say you wanted to speak? Okay, I couldn't tell by the hand language.
I just want to thank everyone for helping Montclair Little League.
Come on up.
Right here?
Yep.
I just want to thank everyone for helping Montclair Little League. I know you guys have been having the police department over there, city workers. We really appreciate you guys, the parents appreciate you guys. The kids really put their heart and soul out in the field. And so it takes a whole community to keep them safe and happy. So I just want to appreciate everybody in the city of Montclair for that.
Well, thank you Tiffany. And I'm not sure, did I tell you to come tonight, or somebody else wanted to come tonight?
Ben Lopez.
Ben Lopez, okay. I wasn't sure, because I was thinking that you needed to be here tonight. And I didn't know if I communicated that to you or not. But thank you for being here.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so we will go with Bruce Culp now.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I just wanted to address a major thing that came up last week, which was the reporting that we're going through a record drought. And we're going to be asked, I don't know if the city of Montclair is going to be asked, but surrounding cities and most of LA and most of Southern California and obviously everywhere is going to be asked to do some water conservation. And so I'm just asking all the Montclair residents and surrounding areas to do their part. I know since I work from home now, I'm down to one shower a week and saving water exponentially that way. But I know that, you know, this drought is a result of, you know, the global warming that's going on. And that's something that we all have to address, especially local cities and local elected officials have to also do their part. They're, you know, I know probably at the end of this meeting, there'll be communications and a council member or two might talk about asking residents to save water. And so as a resident, I'm going to ask you guys to do something for us. And that is to oppose any of these developments that, especially warehouses, that generate tons and tons and tons of greenhouse gases. You know, these are projects that we don't need in our city. They're profits over people, they're unhealthy for surrounding communities. There's lawsuits and every great city is opposing them at this point. I just ask you guys, if you want to do your part in helping the drought as city elected officials, there's all these local elected city officials are going to have to start opposing these types of projects that have so much pollution and cause greenhouse gas emissions and do very little good for any city. And so I ask that you, when you're required to vote for these projects, that you oppose them. And that will help get more water if we can reduce the greenhouse gases. And I ask that all development, especially like residential development, we need to make sure that those are required to have solar and not add any natural gas into them. We need to go all electricity. And all these housing developments need to have outlets for electric cars. So you guys can do your part, we'll do our part, and we'll get through this drought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I did have a meeting with our executive director, Mona Vista Water District General Manager, last week. I think Ed is, did he mention about doing a presentation at the next council meeting? Did Justin mention that to you?
No, I have not heard that yet.
Okay, I, okay. So maybe you could reach out to him and if he can ask him, can we reach out to him and ask him if he can do a presentation at the next meeting? I think it'd be good to know for the council, what's going on, what Mona Vista Water District will be doing.
Mr. Mayor, I believe it was his intention to reach out. I know he would like to do so.
All right, thank you. Any other guest speakers, any other speakers? No? Oh, come on up. Come on down, excuse me.
Hello.
Hello.
I would have to agree with Bruce. There is warehouses to bring a lot of emission gas and stuff like that. But at the same time, I feel like he's wrong about-
I'm sorry, what your name is, please?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. My name is Lisa Guevara.
Okay.
He is absolutely right. But also, at the same time, it's not residential because I currently live on Helena Gardens property with Conoco West. My landlord does not want to fix any water properties. That makes a lot of water. Any of the faucets, any of the bathrooms, that's increasing how much water we're using. And I feel like if my landlord doesn't want to fix that, what about if other landlords haven't updated things to water conservative? So it doesn't really have to do a lot with residential. I just feel like he's absolutely right with the emission gas because I have a degree in health science with option of health education, and he's absolutely right. At the same time, I feel like these landlords don't want to fix things. And I feel like it has to do with everybody and because they don't want to fix it. Like, my building was built in 1964, which probably they were all were. And I feel like people need to modernize what we're doing. And with going up with the times and landlords, like I was saying in a previous meeting, they don't want to do that. And I feel like that's what's causing why there's a drought and stuff like that because he's letting like the back of our patio, he's letting the water drip. How much water is he spending on that with that? Our faucets, none of them have the valve on it and stuff like that. Our toilets just keep flushing at the same time. So it all has to do, maybe he is right, it has to do residential. But at the same time, these showers, these bathtubs and stuff like that, it's like they're not being updated. So if I live like that, does anybody in my community live like that? In our low-income communities, and maybe Bruce is right. These warehouses do bring a lot of emission gas as well as they do bring a lot of air pollution or pollution qualities. It is bad for somebody to be inhaling that all the time. I've been looking at the air quality in Montclair for a little bit, especially when I lived at Chico State, there is times that the air quality is really bad here. It does increase more when the fires do happen. Once the summer hits, the air quality in Montclair will be bad because we have surrounding cities that will be on fire. And that's why we need to stop. I feel like everything correlates right now. I think the UV stuff with the commission and stuff like that, it's okay, it's moderate. But once it does happen and fires do happen and they have to do it because there's not enough trees and stuff like that to stop it, it will happen. If a warehouse is built on the mission Tiki, I feel like it is going to affect us because warehouses are usually in low-income areas and they're trying to push people out. And I feel like it's your decision to vote. But at the same time, I feel like it's also us as a community. If you want people of Montclair to be living here, I feel like that's something that you have to consider because there are schools, there is district, there are people who've lived here for 30, 50 years, have different generations of who they are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a suggestion if I might?
Go ahead.
Ma'am, regarding the water leakage on your property, since the city has no control over water in our jurisdiction, may I suggest you can call Mona Vista Water District? They can come out and assess the water leaks, and they can provide suggestions on how they can be fixed in a written report. And you can then submit that to your landlord, and that might prompt him to take action, just a suggestion.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Reach out to the Mona Vista Water District-
Okay.
-and have them come do a free assessment of the leaks on your property where you rent. And they can provide you a report on suggestions on how to remedy that. And you can then take that to your landlord, and that might be something that may nudge him along. No guarantees, but that's just a suggestion. That's an option that every resident in the city has, is to get a free analysis of water leaks on the property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You can also contact code enforcement in case you believe that there are severe billing deficiencies and causing health and safety standards, then contact our code enforcement division. And if you have a chance, please fill out the speaker card. And then this is why the city clerk has that for her record, I appreciate it, thank you. So we're done with public comments now, and we will now go down to the consent calendar. And any items in the consent calendar to be removed? Ben, do you have anything?
See, like Charlie 1 and 2.
Hey, Charlie 1, Charlie 2. I just want to recognize, I know we didn't do roll call, because I'll take the responsibility for that, but Mayor Protemru is on remote today. And so he's present with us. So do you have anything you wish to pull, Mayor Protemru?
I do not. Thank you for accommodating me tonight. I am on the East Coast in National Harbor, Maryland for a work conference. So I appreciate being able to accommodate my participation tonight.
Okay, but you have no items for consent calendar? How about to my left? Anybody to my left want to pull an item?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to pull tonight.
No? Okay. So let's start with item C1, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. I have a question. One, I'm pleased that we received a grant. However, in the report, the $17,609, what is the intended usage for that grant? What are we going to allot it for? I know the report is general in that it is to be used for the purpose of preventing and reducing crime and violence, but of course, that's all encompassing. So I just was curious as to the specific needs that we have that the funds will be used for.
So we haven't determined the exact usage for the money just yet. It's money that we get on a regular basis, just about annually. This particular agenda report here is just to bring forth the agreement that's signed by city manager Starr, authorizing the county to actually be the facilitator of it, and they take a small percentage of that process. In probably the next council meeting, there will be another agenda report coming through that includes this particular item as well as a previous year's grant. I believe it's the 2020 grant. That'll also come through with another agenda report for an agreement that outlines the parameters of using the funds and what it'll be used for. But it is yet to be determined, you know, exactly what we're going to use this money for.
I appreciate the explanation, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, C2.
Let me get to the page, please. My question was regarding the percentage that we are going to be asked to pitch in. And I'm fine with it because it is fair in that it applies to all the cities that are to be given the usage of dumping sewage into IEUA's facility. I believe, I'm looking for the page, it was 14 point, unless I'm thinking of a different item. No, it is. Is it not? Am I mistaken? Excuse me for a minute. No, it is, okay. The 14.29, isn't, being that we're a smaller city and therefore we don't use as much sewage as opposed to Ontario, Rancho, or any other neighboring cities, Rancho's not in here, so I stand to be corrected. Fontana, Chino Hills are much larger than us. Are we getting the most stretch and bang for our buck just by virtue of us being the smallest on the list?
Well, the cost distribution is equal, as you indicated, approximately $10,000 for each of the seven agencies that are part of it. I understand your concern. Montclair does not produce the same volume of effluent as the larger cities do. But given the low level of the cost to hire the attorney for the negotiations, rather than negotiating the process out with each of the respective cities, it seemed more appropriate that they equally share that $10,000, or of the $70,000, the $10,000 cost. And keep in mind that approximately $52,000 of it has already been spent anyway. So actually, coming to terms at this point in time as to what the distribution will be for the cost was long overdue. And rather than extending the negotiations further, this just seemed to be the easiest course.
Okay, no, I'm fine with it. I understand that it seems like it's just a flat rate applies to all, regardless of usage and what refuse we dump. So I just was curious if that was-
Right, and because it relates to negotiations and hiring an attorney rather than really impacting effluent or other issues like that, the cost of just using the attorney services seemed to be more appropriate going this direction.
All right. With that, Mr. Mayor, unless there's other comments from colleagues-
I was going to make a comment on this. I just want to note to my council colleagues that the Sewage Policy Committee, which I serve and represent Montclair, each city has one vote. It's not based on weight of the population, but each city has one vote, no matter what the size is. And I want to say here that the importance of this agreement is, this agreement was placed back in 19, early 1970s when, at that time, I think it was four or five cities, Chino, Ontario, Upland, Montclair. And at one point, each city had their own sewage treatment plants. And someone came up with a bright idea as perhaps we should consolidate everything and, you know, have one agency instead of four agencies, and then have one location or maybe two locations, now it's five locations, to process all the sewage generated. So this agreement expires in January. I'm hoping that by Labor Day, there'll be a document that's finalized with all the parties. And then that document will be in front of city councils this coming fall before it expires. And I know there was some comments about, you know, the shortage of rain and the crisis we're in right now. And I want to remind everybody that one of the fortunate things that we have in this area is we have a huge aqueduct below us, Chino Basin Aqueduct. And it doesn't get us out of the issue we have, but it does provide relief for this region. I say Rancho Comanga, obviously, Montclair, Chino, Chino Hills, even Pomona and Claremont. Fontana, it's all part of this basin here. And one of the things that we're trying to do, what IEUA is trying to do, is be able to recycle more of the wastewater as opposed to having to go down the river down to Orange County, which by law, a percentage has go to Orange County. But try to recycle those wastewater and have it go back into the aqua, into the Chino Basin. And part of that needs to happen is we need advanced treatment plants. Because of the amount of salt in the wastewater goes to the basin, so we need these advanced treatment plants that that discussion has started now. So the hope here is eventually is one solution to our drought issue is we were able to take the sewage water, treat it, get advanced, remove those salts in, and be able to put it back into the ground here and now give us more abundance of water. And we rely less on the California water system, especially the water coming from Northern California. So I will stop there, but just an FYI for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I will move the adoption of the consent calendar as presented, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second, second by Councilman Johnson. Can I have a, in this case, we'll have to do a roll call. No, because Mayor Protemru is ruled by remote.
Right. Councilmember Lopez?
Lopez, aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protemru?
Aye.
Mayor Dutre?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now down to communications, and I will start with human services. Marsha.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things regarding our programs and some upcoming events. After being closed for more than two years, I'm excited to announce the Montclair Senior Center reopened today. Over 80 seniors were given a warm welcome back with balloons, special table signage, cupcakes, and a large sign that said, "We love our seniors", and of course, a delicious lunch. Senior Center doors open at 10:00 AM and lunches served from 11:30 to 12:30. Through June 30th, you have the option of dining in or picking up your meal to go. For those who prefer their meal to go, you do need to reserve your meal the day before by contacting the senior center, and pickup is between 10:30 and 11:00. After June 30th, only in-person dining will be available. As a reminder, funding for the senior center nutrition program is provided through a grant from the Department of Aging and Adult Services. And all meals for eligible participants have a suggested donation of $3. Our special May activities with the in-person lunch will include celebrations for Cinco de Mayo this Thursday, Mother's Day, and of course, our senior birthdays. Looking forward to welcoming all our seniors back at the center. And then a couple Save the Date announcements. On Monday, May 30th at 6:00 PM, the Community Activities Commission will host their 22nd Annual Memorial Day Program. Program will be held in the Memorial Garden and will include the dedication of six new plaques to our veterans' memorial wall. Please join us as we honor all branches of service on this holiday with patriotic songs, readings, and refreshments. The date again is on Memorial Day, Monday, May 30th at 6:00 PM. Our 8th Annual Country Fair Jamboree will be taking place on Saturday, June 4th from noon to 6:00 PM at the Shark Park. This fun community event will have games, food trucks, petting zoo, carnival rides, craft vendors, contests, and live entertainment. For vendor and sponsorship information, please call the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. And also, please check our city website for more details, including wristband sales for the carnival rides. The date again for this event is Saturday, June 4th from noon to 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much, and it was great to be at the senior center this morning. So, thank you. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item this evening, and that's the one indicated in the agenda. And that's to ask the council members to meet in closed session regarding potential litigation. to meet in closed session regarding potential litigation. Excuse me. That's all I have.
Thank you, City Manager.
No items, but I did want to mention that the splash pad will also be open for Country Fair Jamboree as well as throughout the summer holiday season.
Okay. Myself, I'm not sure why the vacancies for CAC are back on the agenda, but we do have four openings on the CAC, well, four positions expiring on the CAC. So if you're interested, the deadline for that will be next, in two weeks, on May 18 at 5:30 p.m. I just want to state that the Montclair to College Program that was held last Wednesday at the Canyon was an excellent event. The parents and the students obviously were very happy. And so I want to compliment the Chavy College staff, the Chavy Joint Union or Montclair High School staff, and of course, the Montclair city staff for putting that together. So I can very much appreciate it. And then finally, I just want to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Willie Pennington. He passed away last month and he is the husband of Patty Pennington, who is an employee of the city of Montclair and in both our residents of Montclair. Thank you. Ben?
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, if I can go back to one item, a question that I did overlook, even though we adopted it. C3, the traffic signal issue. It mentioned something about the use of broadband funds to install some of the broadband at signals. I thought the use of the broadband funds that we, for those projects, rather, were going to be coming from any of the COVID relief money that we received in the two tranches.
Okay, well, this is different. What we're talking about here is the installation of fiber optic through the city streets. That's a project that is distinct for the city so that we have greater connectivity between our different facilities. If that gives us the capacity to also do broadband outreach to the community, that that will come as part of the federal funds and state funds that we would receive related to that. But this is merely related to the city's installation of cable in the city streets.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. All right. As I mentioned briefly to the City Manager, there's been some pop-up of large billboards around town. For any candidates watching our council meetings, please be aware that the 4x8-sized billboards are not within our ordinance and cannot be displayed within the city borders. So save yourselves some money because I know those are very expensive. Take them down and put them up in another part of your district where you are running. Regarding Saratoga Park, I know the Congresswoman stepped out. I know she was telling me earlier they hadn't eaten since breakfast. I'm sure they are eating at the moment, well deserved. But I wanted to publicly thank her for all that she did in securing those funds. As a Little League coach for the past five years, I'm glad Tiffany's here as President of the League. We have made, we've done a lot with what we are dealing with at the park and there's been some holes. We even play on the field where there's gophers and I'm not lying. We step in holes where there's gopher holes and twist ankles and whatnot. The tower, we're looking forward to a new tower, new field, state-of-the-art. We are very pleased with staff's efforts and work on that in securing, helping her secure those funds and what is coming ahead. I want to publicly give kudos to Tiffany. I know the Congresswoman did when we had her opening ceremonies and presented her with a certificate. But Tiffany has understood the importance of not just what sports does for youth and keeping them off the street and keeping them on the straight and narrow path, so to speak. But she also has taken it upon herself to implement our league's first-ever tutoring program for any youth that needs it because education is key and education is first. And without education, what good is them playing the sport? So that is something that she took the initiative on and I'm hoping many of the parents in the league take advantage of it. But that is thinking outside the box and simply doing more than just being content with, "We just do Little League here." No, we are actually investing in our kids and I am pleased with that. So thank you. National Day of Prayer, thank you, Carolyn, for being here tonight and accepting the certificate on behalf of, from the city. I will not be able to make it. I explained to you why, I normally have in years past. I remember starting out at 15 years old when I was in high school helping out with the project when we would have events at the Quake Stadium. And as you mentioned in conversation before the meeting, there at Fairplex. We've seen a lot of folks come through our doors and we've worked with a lot of folks. A lot of them are no longer with us, God bless them. But I know you'll have a successful event. I do appreciate the fact that you do pray for all the local electeds within the county. And you do mail them cards because it is appreciative. And all elected officials, irrespective of their faith, do need prayer and guidance. But I also appreciate the fact that everyone is welcome at your event and no one is excluded. And we have everyone from all walks of life, every city there, business leaders. And that is truly a genuine benefit to the community. And I thank you for taking that baton and keeping it going. Lastly, in three days from now, many throughout the state and the country, predominantly the Latin community and even more so the Mexican community will be celebrating Cinco de Mayo. And of course, that is to commemorate the Mexican Army's victory over the French at the Battle of Puebla in, I believe, 1865, if I'm not mistaken. I know Bill Ru will probably correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm wearing the traditional mariachi charro bow tie in commemoration of that. I know that the funny thing about the holiday, well, it's not even really a holiday. It's just an event that happens. And it is not widely celebrated or practiced south of the border in Mexico. It is predominantly a Mexican-American thing. And it has turned into an opportunity to just basically party and celebrate. And there's a whole lot of fun to be had there. But I will say to anyone watching, definitely celebrate. Gas is more expensive than beer, so go ahead and drink to your heart's content. Just do not drive. Drink responsibly, have fun. And if you're within the city borders, be responsible. We're fine with you going to celebrate and party. I'd prefer you not fire fireworks. I have a feeling it's probably going to happen. But just be responsible because our police officers have plenty on their plate. And the last thing they need to do is to respond to a house party for Cinco de Mayo. But nonetheless, to all of my fellow Latin community members in the city of Montclair, which is 60% of our residents, have fun and enjoy the day. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe I am done.
Well, I just let you know, I am French, but I have no plans to drink wine on Cinco de Mayo day. So with that, I'm going to go with Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two quick little items. One, I want to talk about a meeting I went to to discuss solid waste. We did have a presentation from BRTech some time ago about putting our food waste in bags. And, you know, I thought they were not quite sane. But the more I hear about it, the more it makes sense. I'm not quite sure that I'm prepared to do that composting every single day, but I think most of us, the day before trash day, we clean out the refrigerator. So at least there's one bag that goes into the green waste. That's a good start. When I talked to one of the BRTech representatives at that meeting, he said it's kind of like all the other recycling that we have done over the years where we started with twining our newspapers and separating our cans and bottles. And it was odd then, but all these years later, we're just used to it. So we will probably just get used to it and work on saving.
I believe that's not, and it will be coming back to the city council.
Oh, good.
So you'll probably be a little careful, you say.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, put your trash in a bag and put it in the green waste. You don't have to do it every day, but at least once a week, do that. The other thing that I want to talk about is the Arbor Day celebration that we had the other day where we planted fruit trees in, at Sunset Park. And, okay, so we planted trees, that was great. But here's what really made it wonderful. A lot of the trees that were planted some years ago are already bearing fruit. And it is right next to an elementary school. And so at some point, the children saw us out there messing around with those trees where they get fruit and really wanted to know what we were doing. And a crowd of them, they don't have access to the park from the school, but they crowded along the fence. And so I went to talk to them and they were asking what we were doing. And I explained what we were doing and why we were doing it. And one of them talked at length about how he and his cousin had mastered how to get up into the cherry tree to get the cherries from the top. But the most poignant was when I said we're building, we're planting more fruit trees. The most poignant was one of the students said, "So you mean you're making more food for us to eat?" Yes, baby, that's exactly what we're doing, yes. And so, and you know, it just speaks to being in the trenches with the people, which is my favorite thing to do. I was really honored to have an opportunity to help plant the trees. Chief Abels and I planted the mango tree, just so you know. There was also an apple tree and I believe a pear tree that was planted. So, you know, I really feel good about that and we're going to need to do more of that as we go forward. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, thank you. First, Happy Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We have a great community here of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that really contribute to our culture here in Montclair. Next, I was fortunate enough to attend the Montclair to College graduation and the award ceremony. It was absolutely fantastic, held at the Canyon, and it turned out so wonderfully. I thought there would be maybe 20 people there, but there were hundreds of people there. And, you know, you could tell that the seniors were very proud of themselves. Their parents were very proud of themselves, their children. And it was just a fantastic event. Also, on April 21st and April 29th, respectively, I was honored to present recognition awards on behalf of the Women's Club of Montclair to the Montclair High School at their scholarship award ceremony and to Vernon Middle School at their award ceremony. And then finally, oh, sorry, two more things. I do also want to sincerely thank Congresswoman Torres for being here today. That was a treat and also for Tiffany for being here. And then finally, we aren't touching on this issue today on our agenda, but just for the residents, I want to make them aware that the city is continuing in its efforts to ensure that Councilmember Lopez is being held responsible per the terms of his censure. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would say this, I did almost forget about Mayor Protemru. So Mayor Protemru, this is your opportunity to speak. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, in addition to API, this is also National Fair Housing Month.